Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Father Mike Chapman is with Holy Angels Catholic Church. He will lead us in the invocation. Afterwards Nathaniel Harding is here to present a flag from Afghanistan to the Oklahoma City Council of As. Nathaniel, he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance following that. So Father, if you'll start us off.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today. We thank you for the willing service of the council members and of their desire to serve the greater good, preserving freedom and security in our society. Help them as they gather today in their deliberations with peace and patience and wisdom. Dios torporoso ayuda a los líderes de nuestra ciudad para guiarnos y para inspirarnos a seguir adelante con su plan en nuestras vidas. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I mentioned a moment ago that Nathaniel Harding had returned from a tour of Afghanistan. Nathaniel serves the citizens of Oklahoma City as a member of the MAPS III Advisory Board, and he is also the chair of our Transit Committee. And so Nathaniel, thanks for coming down here today. Welcome home. He took a leave of absence obviously from his committee work while he was serving our country, but he is now back and serving in his normal capacities.
I just wanted to really just say thank you for the opportunity not only to be on the MAPS Board and chairing the Transit Committee, but to be able to go off and have this adventure and serve my country in Kabul. So this flag was flown over the NATO headquarters in Kabul where I was stationed, and a certificate of appreciation, actually a handmade by a local Afghan handmade display box with Oklahoma City listed in the middle of it and the time and the operation during Freedom. So that's just my thank you for kind of allowing me this leave of absence and be able to come back in and step in the same shoes and continue my volunteerism.
Welcome back. Welcome. Hard to follow that, but we will do so with some opera. We have a wonderful relationship with Oklahoma City University and are consistently amazed at the wonderful talent they have in the area of performing arts. And coming up, they are going to be performing The Barber of Seville from Rosini, and we have Eric Wilson here who's going to perform Canzanetta. Did I pronounce it correctly? Eric, come on up. Eric is performing The Barber of Seville. And afterwards I'll hand you the microphone. You can tell us how we can get tickets. Come out and see the whole performance, all right?
(Music) 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 So we're doing the Rosini's Barber of Seville. It's at OCU on 23rd Street. It's this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If you want to come see me, I'm Saturday night at 8:00. Because we're double cast, so it's Friday night at 8:00, Saturday night at 8:00, and Sunday night at 3:00 matinee. Tickets are available now. OCU's website, the box office and the OCU's website, and I don't know, maybe I don't have a number with me, but there's a number somewhere to call for the box office. So yeah, I hope you can make it. So thank you for...
Eric Wilson, let's show our appreciation. Thanks so much for coming down. Next, we want to bring Paula Jones and her troupe up, right over here. March is around the corner. Irish American Day is headed towards us. I'm going to let you take over because we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Irish Americans have made important contributions to American art, music, and literature, and whereas many Oklahomans claim ancestors who were immigrants from Ireland, and whereas in the past decade Oklahoma has experienced a significant flow of migration to the state, and many of the residents are of recent immigrant stock, and whereas St. Patrick's Day is a traditional occasion of honoring the contribution of Irish heritage to Americans, now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim March 17th, 2013 as Irish American Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. (Applause)
The first thing you need to know is everybody needs to come. The parade happens on Saturday, March 16th. It begins at 1:00, and it begins at the end of Sheridan at Walker and goes all the way through Bricktown. So it's a fun, filled day for families, so come on out. The weather will be spectacular no matter what the temperature is. So we want to see you there for sure. And I want to introduce to you our grand marshal, Peter Pembroke, and he's got a great story to tell because he's really, 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 really Irish.
Good morning, everyone. It's true that there's a lot of new immigrants to, from Ireland to Oklahoma in 2005. My, I came here, I'm actually from Wisconsin originally, but I'm the first generation Irish. My parents and my brothers and sisters were all born in Dublin, and I'm looking forward to being the grand marshal. It's a special honor for me. My father was the parade marshal in Milwaukee in 1992. So it's really neat that I get to follow in the footsteps. So I really appreciate it.
Would appreciate it. Let's show our appreciation. Thank you very much. Good luck. This is great, Michael. (Applause) Also, the Oklahoma City Rotary Club helps us, helps us honor one teacher per month as our Oklahoma City Teacher of the Month. And this month, we have Bethany Lorenz here from Putnam City North. Bethany, come on up. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Bethany Lorenz has been named Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for February 2013. Bethany has been a biology teacher at Putnam City North High School since 2001. Bethany graduated from Oklahoma State University with a degree in secondary education with an emphasis in science, and she is currently working on her master's degree in educational leadership from the University of Central Oklahoma. Whereas Bethany participates in local, state, and national workshops for opportunities to improve her teaching and increase her science knowledge as both a participant and a facilitator. Whereas Bethany is a member of the National Science Teachers Association, the National Association of Biology Teachers, and she sits on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Science Teachers Association. Whereas Bethany has received many awards for her exemplary work, including the 2012 Outstanding Biology Teacher Award for Oklahoma and the 2012 Excellent Educator Award for Putnam City Schools. Now therefore, be it recognized by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Bethany Lorenz on her selection as February 2013 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
And we need a motion. And a second. Cast your votes. And that resolution passes unanimously. I know, I was sweating that one out too. Let's show our appreciation.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank Putnam City Schools for their employment of me, and I wanted to thank the foundation for their support for our students and our teachers. So thank you very much.
She is the State Biology Teacher of the Year and the Putnam City and the Oklahoma City Rotary Club Teacher of the Month. Congratulations, Beth. We're on item 3C of the council agenda, and that is the appointment of Kenny Woodson to the Plumbing Code Review Board. Motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 3D, I have been asked to serve on a task force, a national task force involving infrastructure, financing, and cities, and that meeting takes place in June. I ask the council's permission to attend. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 5th and 12th. Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 29th.
You got a second?
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor settled this morning. On the agenda listed is item 8D, and that has to do with the sporting clays. And so if anybody's here on the sporting clays, that's been deferred until March 12th. Then moving on to the consent docket, on page nine, item 6AB, it's a resolution for a sidewalk project, and we're going to strike, we ask that that be stricken, and we'll bring that back in a couple of weeks. We're going to clarify that memo a little bit. So that's item 6AB on page nine. On page 13, item 6AZ, it's a contract for outside attorneys for labor negotiations, and there's an error in that contract, so we ask that that be stricken too. And that's on page 13, item AZ. And then on to page 22, under dilapidated buildings, item H8, I'm sorry, under item 8H1, item K 3529 Northwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to rework that as property maintenance. Item O 226 Southwest 27th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then moving to unsecured, item 8I1, item C 3108 South Goth, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J 8220 Northwest 10th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K 2315 Northwest 15th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L 2416 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M 3529 Northwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item P 3608 Northwest 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to rework that as property maintenance.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items.
And Mayor, we'd ask that item F be stricken. That's the companion item to the one we struck on the consent docket.
All right. Comments or questions then on MFA?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Okay.
On MFA A, it deals with the drainage problem we've got out of Quail Creek, and it talks about it, the easement we took originally when Quail Creek was planted and moved out of the drainage facility that was there, the natural creek. Does the city have any obligation to keep that drainage within the easement?
We, you know, we talked about this a number of times, Mr. Ryan. We tried to do it only when there is a matter of damage to a structure.
Well, there's, our utilities are exposed because this thing's moved.
Or protection of our utilities.
And I think that the cancellation of this project is a mistake. I think we need to go forward with it because we have a very serious erosion problem that's exposing utilities out there. And the utilities put their facilities in that easement in good faith. And now the easements, I mean, the creek's being moved, and the utilities are being exposed. And I think we have an obligation that since we took an easement on that, to keep the creek within that easement that we took.
Eric, can you fill us in on this project?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. You know, we've been working on the project for some time, and I think one of the things that we initiated was early engineering services to get a better idea of the drainage concerns and some of the issues that are there. And you're exactly correct, there were concerns identified. We also identified that the channel had moved outside of its limits. Where we're at today though, is we simply just don't have construction dollars to apply towards that project to move it forward. So we've added it to an unfunded project list, but at this time, we've done all we can do at the engineering level until we identify those supplemental funds to advance this, and it may take a bond issue to do that.
We do a bond issue.
We're looking at 10 years probably to get the thing done. And we can't wait that long. We've got a quasi-emergency out here where utilities are being exposed, where the drainage is eating away property out there. And we took that easement back when we probably shouldn't have, when that Quail Creek was originally platted. And to me, that expands the city's liability a little bit, or culpability maybe is a better word, in this particular project. So I think we ought to really try to find money somewhere to get this project done.
Just to kind of, I'm sorry, to express the magnitude of the cost, it's about $1.6 million to just kind of get an idea of what the magnitude is. But we will work on that, and we have several projects on an unfunded list that we're working on now. So where it's not off the city's list, we're just not going to proceed with further engineering at this time.
And it's probably not a 10-year window at this point in time. We're probably looking at the next bond issue probably being in December of 17. It hasn't been decided yet, but that's probably where we're headed.
And we're still working on projects for the 2000 bond issue. So I'm not very optimistic about 2017 being, whatever the number has to be, being a fix for this thing. By that time, our easement, the utilities would be laying in the middle of the field out there, totally exposed. But anyway, I understand the financing problem, the lack of money, but I think this is a...
But we've never let our utilities fall into a creek. We always do whatever remediation steps we need to do to protect our utilities.
Well, but we're not this particular thing. We're saying we don't have money to do it, and I'm concerned about that being a serious project out there, serious problem out there, and we're not dealing with it.
But it's being monitored, and if it evolves, and it turns into an emergency situation, we may have to do something at that point in time.
We'll wait till we get the emergency, and then we'll do something about it. That's, thank you very much. There is, in addition, the last sentence, and this has a misspelled word.
Our apologies.
Any other comments or questions on the MFA? We have a motion and a second?
No.
Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are three items. Make it four items, I guess, with the claims and payroll. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions here?
I have a question, Your Honor. On PPA, we're buying some new gasoline-powered golf carts for the Lincoln Golf Course. Was this, and this is supposedly due to the construction out there on the new clubhouse. When we approved the clubhouse plans, did we anticipate this switch gasoline-powered golf carts?
The, this is, this is an interim solution to get us through. We don't have facilities, they're going to tear down their present golf cart area, and so they won't have areas to charge the golf carts. The new facility will, so they'll be switching back to electric as anticipation upon completion.
What will we do with these gasoline-powered carts? It's something about trading them in, but how long does normally does a, I mean, an electric-powered golf cart work?
Steve Carson is here, can answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Steve Carson from Lincoln Park Golf Course. The, the actual, this was actually going to be a rental of the gas cars during construction, and then once construction takes place, we will actually purchase a new fleet of electric golf cars.
And would we have, under normal circumstances, replace the electric golf carts we have at this time?
Under normal circumstances, we would keep the existing fleet for probably a period of two to three more years if we weren't doing the clubhouse reconstruction.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Was this anticipated when we started the project?
Yes, sir.
So this, any costs associated with this particular aspect of the project have been included in the project cost?
Yes, sir. We're completing that.
All right, do we have a motion on the PPA?
Yes, sir.
All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items.
Move the items.
Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the subject.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. Is there any word from council on an item they'd like to speak on the consent docket?
I have a...
Skip, you have one?
Your Honor. 65, and just a quick question on 6, I'm going to say B2.
David, did you say something?
Your Honor, I...
Oh, it was Pat, okay.
I, just a couple of minor questions on item F, H1, and N.
Skip?
H is...
All right. Skip, you want to go ahead and get us started?
Well, I just wanted to, is there someone here on the ABC application for 228 Northeast Second?
Is there anyone here representing the zoning request on the consent docket, 6B2, 228 Northeast Second Street? No one's responding.
All right.
You want staff to comment on it?
Yeah, Bob, can you, is this the Old Sage Restaurant?
I believe so. I'm not sure. I think that's it, but I can confirm that before we can get back with you.
Right. In other words, from the planning commission, everything was approved?
Yes, sir. There were no problems, and they recommended approval.
Because I had received some calls about some other issues as referenced, but if you, you've got the information on, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, Mayor.
Okay.
And my other question was on B5. This is a single-family residential and AE2 airport zone, two districts.
How far south do you go on I-35?
Uh, to 44th?
Yeah, so it sounds like it is.
Okay.
Yeah, this is it, just north of 25th Street. I think you go all the way to 44th.
Right.
So this would be Ward 7.
And all this is, is...
It's an, there's an existing water company south of this location, and they're wanting to add a parking lot and a storage building where they can park some other trucks. That company's been there for several years.
Okay, so it's just adjoining to their own property?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Fine with that.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. On item F, this is a very worthwhile project. I was a little confused. We're going to take some money, we're going to hire a part-time veterinarian and a part-time veterinary assistant, and then we talk about some marketing. Will that veterinarian assistant be responsible for the marketing, or will that be a separate item?
They'll be, we're making an application for the funds from ASPCA, and we have a staff person that will help with that marketing. person that will help with that marketing. So it provides us some funding for the vet, the vet assistant, and marketing, and we'll do that as part of our marketing process.
Okay. So we want to ask the veterinary assistants also to be marketing?
No, they'll be strictly working at the...
Thank you, Your Honor. And on item H, Your Honor, I was a little confused of what we're going to do with this study when we get finished with it, and if it calls for steps to implement the, some of the recommendations, how do we fund those?
Right. Well, we're working with City-County Health, and Gallup has some unique data that they have because they've been benchmarking with other cities. And so we're hopefully get some, some health indicators here and benchmark that against other cities, and then with that, we'll work with City-County Health and attempt to educate, address some of those, some of those issues.
Well, I, we, I think we need to be very careful about, you know, what's the city's, government's responsibility, and what's an individual's responsibility in this issue, because it seems like we're blurring that distinction a little bit. But that's just my opinion. And on number N, I was just confused about who's going to pay for the project. It seems like the Water Trust is paying for the street widening, as well as the relocation of water line, and that, it didn't seem like that's a normal situation, but I wanted to make sure, because we had indicated that the PC project and the WC project were in the same area for the $4,500,000.
No, well, you know, in these type of situations, if the water department needs to do some improvements, they pay for those improvements in the street widening area, and then, then the city pays for the rest of the street.
Right. So this PC slash WC should be separated somehow in the estimated construction cost?
Well, PC's the paving project, street's the street widening improvements, and WC's the water line improvements.
I understand that, but they look like they're combined to get the $4,500,000 cost. That was my concern.
They are. They are. That's the total project cost.
I understand that, but normally, wouldn't they be separated? They're two separate projects, relocation of the water line...
Yes.
And the street.
Yes. And they are, they are, they will be accounted for separately through the project.
And bid separately?
They'll be, they're uniprizes. The uniprizes will be associated each of the projects.
Ed?
Well, I just want to pick up on what Pat talked about. I think we've talked about how the public health numbers are skewed heavily off the charts, concentrated in 10 ZIP codes. And I don't think that it's controversial at this point, that the built environment has a strong impact on public health. The way, the decisions that we make in our infrastructure investments, and if you don't build sidewalks in this city like we did from 1960 to 2000, that's going to impact public health. And so this, to me, looks like trying to figure out geographically targeted strategies. And I just want to, in the strongest terms, say that the built environment and public health are strongly correlated. But, but my question on this was, how, how does this play out? This is a joint strategy with City-County. So what's the timeline? When, when is the study done, and then will we have a presentation, and where...
Well, yeah, we'll have a presentation. I don't have it, I don't recall the specific timeline information, but I can certainly get that back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary?
Just a quick question on item L. This is starting the process for National Registry for Mega Mortgage on 10th Street. Is the owner requesting this, or is the owner on board with it?
Which project, sir?
Item L. Authorizing the mayor to execute the...
Yes. That was requested by the property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Skip?
First, I would like to commend the city and, and of course, ODOT in such a great project as it relates to this Katy Trail, Northeast 4th and High, which is the abandoned Katy Railroad to Northeast Grand Boulevard. The grant that we received, the transportation equity grant that, for the, I guess, for the engineering on the project, how much did we receive?
Eric, can you help me on that one?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be happy to give it to you. I mean, I can get it back to you.
We'll get that, get that back to you.
Okay. And so the work now will be completed within the next 30 days?
Yes, it will.
And the trail will be wide open for use, is that right?
Yes, it will.
There have been some environmental issues that we've been working on in a small section of the trail.
I mean, if you'll recall, that section, it's adjacent to the school, bus maintenance facility on Interstate 35, had, had a leak that was detected as a part of the project, and it took some time to clear that up with the Department of Environmental Quality. That's been since resolved, and so the final work is underway, and it'll be done in the next month.
Okay. Thank you so much. A lot of people's been asking about the, the opening of the trail, so we now know. Thank you.
Any other comments from council on the consent docket? We have one citizen who has signed up to speak on item AY, Alan Payne. Good morning, Alan.
Good morning.
We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Alan Payne, 11109 Blue Stem Drive, Oklahoma City. I'm a current park commissioner, and I just wanted to mention that this item has been before our group three times. One is a concept, which was approved unanimously. The second time, there was some concern about environmental issues and maybe destroying trees or any kind of foliage out there, or any kind of wildlife. So we brought it back again and had a, a, a report from the Guernsey Engineering Department, or firm, that said that if we do it right, that there will not be minimal impact to any of that. And I feel like that the city is quite capable of, all their departments, the park department, any other department that would be involved in this, would make sure that the integrity of that park is not damaged in any way. And I just feel like that we need to make this accessible to the disabled and handicap people, to allow them into that park. A private entity is, is willing to go out and obtain the funds to do that, which I think is very credible, and certainly, on our last vote, it was a unanimous vote from the park commission to pass this project. So I would ask that that be passed.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Alan. Thanks for your work on the committee, too.
May I make a comment on that?
Yeah, sure, Pat.
This is, I think, a really, a very interesting project, and there are, there was some opposition, and I wanted to point out the fact that the city is being very, very careful in this project, include several steps to ensure that it is environmentally acceptable. This particular authorization here does not provide for any construction at this point yet, but it does provide a mechanism where the people who are sponsoring it, Wilderness Matters Group, go ahead and get their final plans, preliminary plans, built, and then they'll be reviewed again by the parks commission and by Public Works before they come to the council, to ensure that what's going on out there is compatible with the use of our nature park. I think the city's very concerned about that park, and, but we are excited about this particular project. It's got a lot of appeal to me, opening up the park to people who otherwise couldn't use it, but we need to be very careful that we maintain and protect the nature of the park. And I think the city's doing a good job to cooperate with Wilderness Matters and ensure that what's done out there is done in a proper fashion.
Right. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We're on to the concurrence docket. We have a motion and a second. 30 items on the concurrence docket today. Any comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item 8. This begins a series of items that require a separate vote, and we start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 2. It's an ABC issue at 6161 North May Avenue. Ed, you okay with this?
I am. Unanimous planning commission approval, no protests. I'd move for approval. Are there, anybody signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 8A1?
Move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 13300 Northeastern Avenue. It's currently a planned unit development, and they've put a new spud together for it. Skip?
I haven't received any calls in this, and planning commission has recommended, and so I'll stand with that.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 8A2? All right. Skip's made a motion. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3. It's 8620 Southwest 74th Street, and again, it's a planned unit development with a new spud. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this, Francis?
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present? If he'd come forward. For the council's benefit, this is a, an operation at this address that was, that had a previous planned unit development or spud a number of years ago. There was quite a bit of a discussion among the residents whether this was suitable or not. It was approved. If you would, brief the council on what your, what your intentions are at this time.
Yes, sir. My name's Dan Cromwell. I'm an associate with the property owner, Mike Blackwell, who is also here. We currently operate a retail gun shop at that location. Our long-range plan is to expand into more educational services, CLEET training, providing range opportunities. So we came back to the planning commission and asked them to review our spud, our initial application, because it was about six years old. As obvious by the nature of the business we're in, and it's very critical, in our opinion, that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And this proposal was based on the recommendation of the planning commission staff. And so we came forward with that. We had circulated petitions in the neighborhood, and we're asking for this change so we can enter into the construction of a state-of-the-art, law enforcement, military-grade, indoor, enclosed, gun-range, 24-lane.
Thank you. Bob, if you would, in the original spud that came through, there was fencing requirements that the applicant was to meet, and now, this time around, the fencing was discussed. Would you give the council a briefing on where we stand on that and why we're at where we are?
In, there was screening required in the initial PUD 1162. The applicant put up a metal fence, which was not allowed in that PUD. When he came back, he, he spent a substantial amount of money on that fence. And so what the planning commission recommended is that he put a cap on the fence to, to make it look better, add additional landscaping that will kind of break up that appearance. And that's what's presented in this application.
Has that cap been implemented yet, or is that still in the planning stage?
It, it is, it's in the bid stage, but we are going to cap it and continue with the planning. Yes, sir.
So when can the neighbors expect that fence to be capped?
Within the next, the next 60 days.
Next 60 days?
And we'll, we'll put it, we'll make a note, and we'll check it.
And it, and it is within the purview of the planning commission to listen to the facts and to make a decision to pass that, that metal fence, even though it was out of, out of spec?
Yeah. In an SPUD, they can vary the fencing standards and make a recommendation to you, to the council, and then you can ultimately decide how you want to proceed.
Thank you. Unless there's any questions from the council, I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A4 is also in Ward 3 at 12800 South Meridian Avenue. It's a planned unit development and also an AE2 airport environs district, and it would become a new spud. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the applicant's representative is here. This has an interesting little history to it. David, if you would, give the council a history of why we're doing what you're recommending here.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. What we have is 2.1 acres that we are asking for a spud. Originally, this 2.1 was part of an overall 80 acres that we were going to come in with a plat for R1 single-family. Because of a pond that you can see on the, the site plan before you, the only way to get access from what was going to be three residential lots was to take direct access off to, off of Meridian. Planning commission didn't like that. We would have had to seek a variance, because the sub-rigs don't allow that. So what the planning commission asked us to do was to come back with a, a commercial spud. So what you now see before you is a spud. It asked for C1, so it's a limited neighborhood-type commercial spud, and the planning commission ultimately recommended approval unanimously to the council.
Thank you, David. Anybody signed up on this, Francis? Unless the council has some, some questions, I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8A5 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 5415 South Chartel Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential and R4 general residential, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Pete?
I don't have any question about it, if...
I'll, I'll just briefly explain to the council what this is. This is a, I represent the housing authority, Eric Groves, for the record, and this structure's been there since the late 1960s. And the bottom floor has essentially served as a lobby, but the uses are R1 and R4. We want to put in a sort of mini medical clinic on the first floor and also adult daycare. It's a program called PACE, been successful elsewhere. In order to do this, we need to rezone the property to allow for the adult daycare use and the little medical clinic use, so we did a spud. I think this will improve the quality of life for the residents and hopefully save some time and effort on handling minor medical problems right there on site.
I move approval.
Any comments or questions on item 8A5 from anyone else? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8A6 is in Ward 2 at 722 Northwest 86th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Ed?
So this is to permit construction of a light industrial office and warehouse, and I understand it was amended based on our planning department's recommendations. So, I mean, there's no protest, there's unanimous planning commission approval. Do you have a...
No, that, I, they, there was no objection. They agreed to face the buildings towards each other and put masonry on the north side to protect the residential, and that was their compromise and planning commission recommended.
And so you're okay with this?
Yes.
Okay. I move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A6, and it passes unanimously. On to item 8B. This is to vacate an alley for the Maps for Kids Downtown Elementary School. It's in Ward 6. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Item 8B? All right. How about a motion, then? Cast your votes. Item 8B passed unanimously. Item 8C is a opportunity for us to create a domestic violence shelter on Northwest 39th Street at 2460.
Can I, I think this is very, very important, and if I could ask maybe just Jan Perry from YWCA.
Sure.
We've got, across the country, this is a problem. You've got 1.3 million women a year assaulted. You've got, on average, across the country, you've got some 25% of women that will be raped or physically assaulted during their lifetime, basically one out of four. But in 2010, when the CDC looked at the lifetime prevalence of women that were raped or physically assaulted or stalked, they ranked Oklahoma number one, basically 49%, basically one out of every two women. So I'm very excited about this 27,000-square-foot building that will increase services to, I believe, 80, some 85 women and children, and if you could just speak to that for just a moment.
It's very exciting to hear the councilmen quote some of the information on that. This is something that has been a quality of life, as well as a business and economic impact to our community. It impacts the children in these homes that are, their likelihood to become sexually active with impacts teen pregnancy, drug and alcohol abuse, and dating violence among teens. It also impacts child abuse, when there is a death from child abuse, and Oklahoma's ranked pretty high there. Then there is also a pattern of abuse against the mother at least 70% of the time, so a direct, direct link to that. In the last year, as we've been doing a lot of early awareness raising around this, as we've raised the money to build this shelter, we have seen with that, and then we've also been in the last two years, doing extensive work with Department of Human Services and training with them across the state. What we're seeing is an increase to our services and the demand for services. We've had at least a 67% increase on our calls to our hotline. We've had about a 34% increase on those seeking services in the shelter alone. What's happening is, we've gone from where I think last year, 2011, we turned away approximately four, excuse me, 400 women who needed services. We help them find our staff kind of chokes when I say we turn them away. We do try to help them develop safety plans and find alternatives, but basically around 400, this year already, with the predicted rate of those we've had to do on a monthly basis, we're looking at approximately 1,200 people. So the Oklahoma Domestic Violence Fatality Review Board has identified that the homicides that are happening, at least 95% of those victims never access services. So we know that when we're getting them in, we're saving those homicides. It's, we've done some research in Oklahoma City Police Department alone, not counting the other police departments, just Oklahoma City Police Department here in Oklahoma County, about an $8 million cost because of domestic violence. When it comes to the courts, the cost of these cases are approximately $800,000. So this is a huge economic impact, as well as the quality of life. We need to provide those services. We need to be able to make sure that those women and children, predominantly, we do work with men, and we do help them find a place as well, but we need to make sure that they have safe services and available to move forward. Thank you.
Can I just say, if somebody wanted to get involved or wanted to donate, how would they do that?
They can call me. I will take any kind of donation. We, they can call us at 948-1770, or they can also go to our website, which is ywcaokc.org, and they can donate online as well. We're always looking for volunteers for in-kind donations and, as well as cash donations. We have about 20,000 hours of direct services every year, so that time, talent, treasure, we use every tiny bit of it that we can. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Your Honor, may I ask a question of Jan?
Yeah, sure, Jan. Yeah, sure, Jan.
I'm sorry. I understand that the demand for the services you provide is increasing, but could you make a statement as to whether or not you feel like the incidence of violence is increasing?
Well, you know, councilman, that's, it's hard to tell. We are, we've been talking about that. We're not sure if the incidents themselves are increasing or the awareness is having more people reach out for service and report it. It may be that double-edged sword, but at this point, we're not sure which of that. But our ranking went up as far as improving over the last year, but the number of services reported did not. So we think more people are reaching out for services as well as, part of what we've seen is, those that are coming for services, also, we're seeing a rise in the level of violence that is coming. And so that's another reason for safety.
Well, I have a follow-up question to that, and it's a question, I'm not looking for an answer now, but perhaps we, with partners such as the YWCA and other organizations, could begin addressing, how do you reverse that trend? Even if the incidence of violence is remaining the same, how do you begin to reduce that? You know, we talk up here in terms of hiring additional police officers, which I'm a proponent of, but I don't believe that that by itself is going to make Oklahoma City a safer place in a sense that we have to begin to address the cause for violence and, not to carry this too far, but just this Sunday, I noticed three separate incidents as I was leaving work to get on I-40. I-40 was being shrunk to one lane due to construction. People were getting angry as they were having to try to find ways to get off I-40 and cutting in and out. And you saw examples of people losing their composure and, you know, certain types of actions and things like that. I noticed it later that evening when I went to a store in the parking lot. People would honk if someone pulled out in front of them. And then finally, ultimately going home, I saw it again. And so my question is, and maybe we could provide some guidance, it just seems like there's a problem throughout our society as far as manners and, you know, just a focus on oneself as opposed to taking others into consideration. And so I would like to see if we could work together to address that, and how do we address those fundamental issues of violence? Because it's so easy to see how, for example, road rage elevates to some kind of violence, and I can see it happening in all sorts of instances, so.
Well, you know, there's a statement that says that domestic violence will rise to the level that a community will accept it. And so that's part of the breaking, breaking the silence in violent, in domestic violence, and beginning to say to our public, this is not acceptable in our community and our state. When you look at the children that are raised in these homes, seven out of 10 are going to repeat the cycle. And so they're going to continue that violent behavior. It is what they've been taught, what they've learned. That's how they're taught power and control, is through the violence. And so the violence that is, is perpetuated and grown and developed in a home with domestic violence does filter out through the violence in all aspects of our community. Most prosecutors and officers, or at least at a high level of those officers that have been involved in police work and domestic violence prosecution, will tell you that it is, impacts all the levels of crime across the community. So as we begin to address this and not sweep it under the carpet as a women's issue and recognize it is a community issue, and then begin to address the children and providing violence prevention education, then it will help overall begin to impact the violence level in our community.
Well, one final comment, and I'll let someone else ask some additional questions. I just think it's an important issue and a partnership approach, such as the YWCA, school administrators, faith-based organizations, our own police department, and other appropriate agencies working together to try to help lower the incidence of violence and inappropriate behavior, I think is important, and perhaps we could take that on and provide the initiative city manager to address something along those lines. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I just ask one final question? David made me think, in terms of causality, the, can you just speak to drug and alcohol abuse? Because I think that we, I think last year, we had some 45 domestic violence murders. Talking to Chief City, it seems like the overwhelming majority have some drug and alcohol component. Can you talk to that in terms of...
Drug and alcohol is seen as symptomatic of the issues. It's very seldom causal. It can oftentimes increase the level, the bravado of the perpetrator at that time. But it also impacts across the board, like I said, teen use of drug and alcohol as well. Usually, there is drug and alcohol and mental health that actually in Department of Mental Health surveys a few years ago was pretty comparable to the community at large, wasn't greater or larger. But you realize that the victims in these families oftentimes will seek some type of relief. It may be self-medication, it may be get involved in drugs and alcohol. So it's more often symptomatic and be part of the dynamics, but it's not often causal for the issue of domestic violence itself.
Jan, thank you. It's Perry.
I would just like to, I promise I won't be long. I would just like to thank you in advance for making a commitment to be here on the 21st at 6 o'clock, and I'm sure that the questions and the presentation in reference to domestic abuse will be well presented. And so I just want to thank you in advance for making the commitment to be part of the community forum here on the 21st at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion, Ed, then, on item 8C. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D has been deferred until March 12th. Item 8E is up for final hearing. Council has been hearing in the past about the need for model airplane regulations. This has worked its way through the system. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8E today? All right, how about a motion?
Mayor, I'd move approval. I'd like my comment.
All right.
This ordinance that we're approving today is a result of five years, a little more than five years, of conversations back and forth with this club in, that's located at Lake Draper, to try to make this ordinance better. And I believe it will serve as a model for the couple of other radio-controlled flying clubs that operate in the city, for how to operate them. I think, I point out the timeline because things like this take a long time. They just, they just take a long time. There have been a number of meetings with these people, lots of give and take with regard to what would work, what wouldn't work, and I'm very pleased that we're finished with it. And hopefully, the other two clubs, I believe, that also operate on city property are going to adopt similar rules.
Were representatives of those other clubs involved in drafting this ordinance?
They were not, but they were pretty aware, they've been made aware of it, and all of them, I believe, are asking of, we can talk about it, because all of them are on the Water Trust land that I know of, and so we can actually probably get into detail with Marcia about that this afternoon at the Water Trust meeting.
Thank you.
But I, it's very broadly based. I mean, this club is, has had some changes and so forth, but I'm very pleased with it. It's one of those kind of activities that we can facilitate and accommodate on Water Trust land that probably you couldn't find another place to put it very easily. There's a sound problem, there's a flying airplane problem. You couldn't get it up too close to people's houses without creating problems. So I'm just pleased that we found uses like this, long-term uses that utilize that lake property. It's not a revenue generator, but it's a, it's a, it's a, something that is able to citizens of Oklahoma City within the city that you probably couldn't find in a lot of cities. So I move.
Pete, I agree with you. Could this be used for kite flying, too? I've been approached by...
No, this is a strictly radio-controlled model airplane facility. In fact, one of the things they wanted, they want to talk about, about the improvement to the facility, they want to talk about lengthening and widening the runway so they can accommodate radio-controlled jet.
But the model is a model where a user group will impose, or have the city impose a fee on them, and the dollars off that fee are used to fund some improvements on the area. So if there was a user group that wanted, you know, to impose a fee, but there's administrative issues out there, if you've got a kite group, I don't know how that fee's going to be paid for, and where that money's going to be collected, and those kinds of issues that would be related to it. So it has to be at least enough organization. The other place this has been a model for is the dirt bike.
Yeah, that's probably the best, that's where it really got started with the dirt bike. Because that's, that's another activity that you just can't permit anyplace. I mean, it's going, they're going to tear up the ground wherever they go, they make a lot of noise, there's a lot, there were two competing clubs. The contract that served really as a model for this airplane contract really was the dirt bike contract at Draper, where we put them all in one spot, the two clubs now work together, the money that's generated by the fee that's charged goes to improve their racecourse thing.
And fishing kind of falls in that category, too. We have a fee for fishing, and that fishing is used, goes back to fund the fishery and other activities related to that. And quite frankly, the boating does, too. We have a boating fee, and that stays in the non-recreational parts, and that's used to improve, do improvements out at the reservation. So it's those type of areas where you've got people that, they may not all be willing to, but they're at least, they're agreeing to be assessed these fees for their, the benefit of their activities.
All right. Pat, did you want to say something?
I have one question. Pete, was there any discussion about television cameras attached?
About what?
Television cameras.
Television?
Because one of the, there was a feature on television last week, I think, of somebody who was from a model airplane club, equipping model airplanes with TV cameras for use by our Public Safety Department. And there's been a lot of discussion about, quote, drones, unquote. And I wanted to know if this, if we had any discussion when we put this regulation together about that aspect of it.
Not that I know of.
Thank you.
All right, ready to vote on item 8E? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F would make some changes to our downtown zoning ordinances that deals with outside storage and outside vendors. This is up for final hearing today. Anybody here wishing to speak on item 8F? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8G changes some flood maps, and Eric is here to give us more information. Sidon's being introduced today. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. What we have is an ordinance regarding our drainage ordinance in Oklahoma City that's being introduced to you today in consideration for adoption. This is, we talk about flooding in Oklahoma City, and we talk about FEMA's responsibilities and things that we do. Most of our homeowners have gone through the process of experiencing firm panels. These are flood insurance maps that help those that are in flood-prone areas receive insurance for property damage. And so what you have today is another set of revisions that's being proposed by FEMA, and therefore your adoption, because they're included as a part of the city's ordinance. What's changed? So you're going to see in here that there's a new process called Risk Map. The older maps were done by hand. There were surveys, there were things that were done that were very paper-generated. The technology has much been updated, it's now electronic. They're able to use a lot of advanced computer modeling that helps the maps be a lot more accurate. And so the maps that have been completed for Oklahoma County are already in place. The ones that are being considered here are for Cleveland County for the area of South Oklahoma City. So FEMA is continuing to use this new Risk Map process, one that's more digital, it's more electronic, and it gives us a better indication of the areas of Oklahoma City that flood, and we're starting to adopt those as they become available. And so that's for your consideration today. Now, as the maps change, one of the concerns that does come up from our citizens is that they may have had a property that did not fall within a flood-prone area, and now it does. There is a process that FEMA goes through to provide those new homeowners, or those homeowners of those existing facilities, flood insurance. And so it's at reduced rates, protects their property, and so this is one of the advantages of the process, that someone may have not known that they were in a flood-prone area, the map is more detailed and better, and now that they are, and they can get the insurance that they need for that property. So again, we're going to see this continue. This is something that we will be seeing FEMA go into the other counties of Oklahoma City, making map revisions. There's also some new programs that are available to the city of Oklahoma City where we can be eligible for future federal grants for drainage improvements. But it all comes back to some of the changes, and this, again, is for your consideration today, and can answer any questions that you might have.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yeah, Pat, and then Skip.
Is there any, Eric, is there any notice provision either by the FEMA or the city, if a person's property has changed, was in a flood zone, is not, or vice versa?
It is my understanding that there is, and that FEMA takes care, and that FEMA does that and offers that insurance program to them.
Okay, the insurance program is a separate item, but the notification is important.
I will confirm, but I believe that is something that FEMA does, yes, as the map provisions are adopted.
Thank you.
Skip?
So Eric, has this been pushed by FEMA to get municipalities to pass a new ordinance as it relates to the flood zone?
So different municipalities have different ordinances related to flood areas. So the city's ordinance, the one where we actually do our own internal controls, as the city engineer, I'm also the city's floodplain manager, so there's a lot of, you know, building applications and permits all come to our office for review to determine if they're in a flood-prone area or not. We just happen to have local control as a part of the city ordinance. Because the maps have changed, we now need you to adopt the new maps.
Well, of course, if someone wanted to obtain flood insurance, would they just contact your office to determine whether or not they're in a flood zone area?
They can, and we receive those requests frequently. The information's also now, because it's electronic, it's available online at FEMA.gov. So because they no longer require paper maps, I would tell you, not just too many years ago, you did have to come to the city, or you had to come to an office that held all the maps. They weren't readily available to the public. They're now almost all online, and so people can actually self-check their property locations at FEMA.gov. Now, we continue to provide that service at the city's Public Works Department for those that come to our office, yes.
And then they, if they are, then they can take out the flood insurance with FEMA?
They can, and I believe FEMA also offers insurance for residences or businesses or properties that are outside of flood areas. You can still get insurance even if you're not in a flood area. But if you're in a flood area and you have a mortgage, you're going to be required to get insurance. I mean, that's usually a mortgage or a lender's requirement that you have insurance when you do that.
Well, some of that just sounds so contrary to what was presented to some citizens several years ago from one of the, when we had the big flood. Do you think it's possible, since we're addressing this now, that we could put together a public information form? Because I think a lot of people need to have the real ABCs of this, and know if they are in a area that is considered a FEMA-declared flood zone area, that they are prepared to either take out the insurance to protect their property and at least have, you know, pre-knowledge of what the, you know, what the requirements are, if they are.
Yes, I think we can do that. FEMA has a lot of literature that's on their website that pertains directly to the public and opportunities for them. I think we can simply capture that and make sure that we update our local community with a lot of that information. So the answer is yes, I think we can do that successfully.
Because I have a lot of people that don't have computers, and, I mean, that live in Ward 7, and because of the age and so forth, I just think that, you know, we should make an attempt to get as much information that we could present in a personal kind of way.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Pat?
One more question, Eric. If a person is found to be in a flood-prone area now that he wasn't before, does he go to FEMA directly for insurance, or does he go through his normal insurance channel?
I believe they go through their normal insurance channel.
Okay, so there is, need to be some educational effort in that, because there is some confusion among real estate agent, insurance agent, rather, about how to get insurance, flood insurance.
And to be clear, again, certain lenders require, when you take a loan, if your property is in a flood area, you are required to get insurance. And so that's usually done at the time the property is acquired. You know, that's, the title companies address that, and fees are taken and all that, so at that time. But... But if you've paid off your house, or you're buying a property that's not in a flood-prone area, you're not required to buy the insurance, but it is available to you. So we can probably do a public information process to try to get that.
Well, you might marry that with what Councilman Kelly asked. But I think there, because I was told by a lot of the people in that area that were flooded so badly a couple of years ago, that they couldn't buy flood insurance. I went to my agent, bought flood insurance, which was relatively inexpensive because I'm top of the hill. The process is there. It's a little bit more complicated than calling your agent, getting it done. There's some FEMA paperwork that's behind as well, but it can be done.
And again, the item today is to give us better mapping results so that we can provide better information to our public, and so that's the item today.
All right. Thanks, Eric. We have a motion and a second. Let's push this through. This is item 8F. That item is being pushed for a future vote, and there will also be another public hearing on this item. We also need the emergency, so I'll ask for a motion on the emergency. Cast your votes on the emergency for item 8F, and it passes eight-zero. Oh, I said 8F, that was obviously 8G. Now we're on to item 8H. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, how about a motion there? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8J is a request for a revocable right-of-way permit. They're going to hold the Glow Run 5K. It'll take place in Ward Seven. Skip, you okay with this?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there anyone here representing this organization or this effort?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to let you know that this company is based out of Kansas City, and was difficult for them to make it down today. They have done a site visit with the Adventure District and police, and they've been working with me on notification throughout the whole process, so.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Have a motion? Cast your votes on item 8J-1. It passed unanimously. And item 8J-2 is the opportunity to hold the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March the 16th.
Move it.
The organizers are here, if anyone has any questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously, and I assume everyone is invited. Again, but what time does that parade start on the 16th? 1:00 on the 16th, and it's down Sheridan. Starts sort of in the Film District or in that area, but moves toward Bricktown. We invite everyone to come out and help the Irish celebrate their day. Item 8K is an authorization to sell bonds for all sorts of nice public works projects and other amenities, and...
It's a $90 million issue.
This is a large one.
It is a large one.
Yeah.
Yes. This resolution authorizes the sale. It's a 2013 GO bond sale, and in the resolution, it outlines by proposition how much will be sold for each proposition. The council's been briefed on the projects that are planned within these propositions. These are basically, they're 20-year bonds. The bond sale date is set for March 19th. There will be an ordinance that will be introduced on March the 12th. The closing on the bonds is set for May the 9th, so we'll receive the funds on May 9th. The actual sale will occur on March 19th.
All right. Comments or questions here? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8L is to approve the Maps for Kids amended program implementation plan. Mike Myes is here. From time to time, we do amend these plans, and Mike's going, I guess, expose today what the new plans are.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, manage your couch. I have a brief slide presentation. The actual amendment document is about 84 pages, but I think we've done, we've tried to summarize for you what the nature of those changes are and the scope of those changes. The document was last updated in September of 2011. There are effectively 40 different changes as part of this amendment. Five of those changes are fairly generic, which they change page numbers, the table of contents, and the addendum. The addendum, and I'll show you an example of that later, is a summary of all of the changes that have been made within this document. There are updates to 34 schools. 21 of these are budget adjustments, which reflect changes to the construction budgets based upon bids actually received as opposed to the budget numbers that were provided in the initial PIP. So those have been updated to reflect what construction numbers actually came in at. 12 of these changes are final closeouts for projects that have been completed and which have been turned over to the district. And then there are a couple of other minor modifications, such as the addition of parking at Class and SAS. This is a sample of the amendment addendum at the end of the amendment, which goes through each one of the changes and provides a summary of what each one of those changes is relative to each school. Each of the, the amendment also includes a summary of the costs for each one of the schools, as well as a summary page, which shows the overall cost related to each of those schools. In this case, it's Hillcrest Elementary. If you look at the very bottom, highlighted in yellow, it shows that this is a school that has been completed. There's a closeout adjustment and shows the final total number. That really is the presentation that I have for you today. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
All right, questions on item 8L?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yeah, Pat?
Mike, the, in the Maps for Kids, go see Maps program, initially there was money in there, as I understand it, for a new administration building? Does that address this at all?
The adminis-
David, do you want to talk?
There was, there was money involved there to do an administration fix of some type, and we are presently pursuing that at this point in time. They've identified a building, and we're having an appraisal done on that building.
Thank you. That's answered my question, thank you.
And by the way, just to get a quick update, sometimes we lose the big picture of what's going on for Maps for Kids. All the schools have been bid out for Maps for Kids at this point in time, with the exception of the downtown elementary school, and the bids will be taken on that in March. We had the street vacation, or the alley vacation for that this morning. And so that will be bid in March, that's the last school, and we're, it seems like every month we're closing a school out of the last group, so we're on that last phase that's going on. That doesn't mean Maps for Kids is over, because we still have a number of projects that are in bond projects that were passed by the school district in '07, and we are administering those school projects for the school district. Most of those involves gyms and classrooms that are being added on to elementary schools. And then we're continuing to finish out the, if you will, the grant project that we had going on with the suburban school districts. And most of that money is spent, but there is still some money left in that project for the suburban districts, and there's a date on that when that has to be used. David, and that's within another year and a half, two years?
The applications have to be received by 2017, but they have till, I believe, 2021 to actually spend it.
So that'll go on a little bit longer. So that's just, we're making pretty good progress on, there's still challenges in the school district, as we talked about Tuesday, last Tuesday at the council retreat, but our portion of the Maps for Kids projects is basically wrapping up, and we're going to end up a little bit in the black by the end of the day.
We're not wrapping up if we're talking about the gymnasiums, though, right?
No, but it's sales tax dollars, the Maps for Kids sales tax dollars. That, we're on the last, the last sales tax projects, there's two, the administration building and the downtown school. So that portion of it is wrapping up, and the sales tax portion is going to end up in the black by a couple of million dollars, and that money will be left to be used for, I'm sure, an additional school project or two.
Yeah, the gymnasiums are not part of Maps for Kids, but they're part of the '07 school bond issue, and the city is administering the process, so it kind of appears like it's part of the same process, but it's a different funding source.
And this update is just the original Maps for Kids process, project, does not include the 2007 bond-issue projects.
So, well, then, my question wouldn't be to you, then, about the priority of the gymnasiums?
The gymnasium priority was set by the district.
Just the district?
Yes, sir.
Their money. Mike, do you have, is this amendment in package form? Have I, I may have already received it and didn't know I had it, but...
I don't know. Like I said, it's an 84-page document, which has, if I back up, has pages for each one of the schools that had an amendment or had a change, has backup like this that describes that, so.
Okay. It's in this document? Okay, I've got it in here. Thank you.
All right, Mike, thank you.
I got, I got one more question. You mentioned 12 projects you consider closed and completed. Is Northwest Class in one of those?
No, sir.
So you've still got a bunch left working on.
There's currently work going on out there right now, but we should be wrapping that up pretty soon.
Okay, could you get me an update on what's left out there, please?
I will.
I know we had a special circumstance with the friends in Northwest Class and stuff that they were doing as well, but I'd like to see where we're at on both of that.
Be glad to.
Seems to be some discussion on not being done.
Okay. Thank you, David.
All right, how about a motion on item 8L, to approve the program implementation plan amendment? And a second, did we get a second? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We're on to item 8M, and this is continuing our negotiations with Hargraves and the Maps Three Park.
Right, the Maps Three Subcommittee on Parks passed a resolution, and they'd like us to program the south end of the park to make sure it ties properly into the river. We do not have Maps Three funds to go outside the boundary of the park, but they want to make sure that it was properly master-planned, so in the future it would tie in and be a functional tie with the river. And so this is to modify their contract to do master planning on that aspect of it.
I can't remember what month it was, but around this time, I went to the Park Subcommittee, and I indicated that I thought this is premature, and I didn't get any pushback, so I guess later they, they thought to go ahead with it. So I'm, I'm just, I'm a little bit caught off guard. The Park Subcommittee wants us to spend Maps Three sales tax dollars to hire Hargraves to master-plan land outside of the park.
I think it would be a tendency to make sure that there's a smooth flow between two adjacent pieces of park, property, not necessarily, not to do any improvements. We don't have any dollars to do any improvements there, but they want to make sure that it's tied together, and that may affect the design in the South Park itself and some expectations for some time down on the river.
Well, here, the, I'll repeat the arguments I made at the Park Subcommittee, which is that, A, you don't know exactly what is going to be happening on Robinson yet. You don't know the streetcar route. What if the streetcar went down Robinson, for example? What if the streetcar went down to the river at some point, and then you had transit-oriented development? What if you had a transit stop at the river? Would your master plan look differently under that scenario than if you didn't? Of course it would. And so the south end of the park is going to be completed in 2021, nine years from now? We don't know how development along the river will move. It's changing very, very rapidly to the east. We don't know how that's what's going to happen along there. So we're master-planning for the area around the river a decade ahead of time with Maps Three sales tax dollars? It, to me, it seems premature. Even if you just waited a few months to figure out the streetcar, you would be in a better position potentially. But that's my first problem, is that it's premature, years premature potentially, and you're just going to spend money later to master-plan this again. Secondly, we've heard for the better part of a year that we couldn't address Manuel Perez Park because it was outside the legal boundaries of the park.
Now, we're looking at tying how Manuel Perez Park will tie into the park, which is the same thing we'd be looking at here. We're clearly taking a look at Manuel Perez Park, and the best use of that.
But are you, right, but you're not spending-
We're not spending any money on it, just like we wouldn't spend any money on the South Side.
Well, we're spending Maps Three sales tax dollars to master-plan for areas outside the park now.
And we're looking at Maps Three, master-plan dollars as we're looking how the best tied into Manuel Perez Park, too.
Okay, but are you now opening up the potential to use Maps Three sales tax dollars-
No.
-on land outside?
No.
Kenny, what do you think?
They, can you do it? Yeah, you can spend Maps Three sales tax dollars for any city capital improvement, so whatever project that's a city capital improvement, you could spend the money on. Based on our process of establishing what the project is, you probably would have to amend the project description to take it outside that, but you can, you can actually spend those dollars on any city capital improvement. So if you have a, if you wanted to make some other part, part of the Maps Three project, you could do that, too.
So legally, you have a $120 million budget for the park. There's nothing legally to stop you from spending some of that money on Manuel Perez, or incorporating Manuel Perez into the park, or master-planning for Manuel Perez Park?
Right, it would be within the earmarking of the sales tax dollars. It's actually a city's capital improvement sales tax, and then the Maps Three program and what's included in that has been established administratively by the city council and the management.
But the council has established the boundaries of the Maps Three Park, and we aren't intending to spend those dollars for capital construction within that park. The master planning is to look to make sure that around our perimeter, that those two, you know, that area, Perez Park, which they're already looking at, and the river, to make sure that it's a reasonable tie into it. But if you want to put this off, we can certainly do that also.
But David, I'd ask you, I mean, to master-plan an area outside the park in 2012?
I think that that's part of what the Subcommittee and the advisory board was thinking, is because of that area there is tied, and you've also got parks across the river, they want to help tie that whole area together, and they didn't want the river area out there between Robinson and Walker, just kind of floating out there and doing nothing. So this was an opportunity for them to do some master planning, to tie, as Mr. Couch said, to tie the park with that area, and tie the whole, the whole area together, the parks across the river and that park. You know, now that we're having the coordination meetings, I think that helps with your problems with the transit and those kind of things, that it actually brings more of the area into the fold, so to speak, and helps with the planning.
You're not going to build the south part of the park for many, many years.
That's right.
So you could tweak the southern border of the southern part of the park in years to come, if there was some way you wanted to interface with the river better.
We could.
May I ask a question? Procedurally, are we just authorizing to enter into negotiations, or are we approving a contract?
No, this is authorizing us to enter into negotiations.
Would the contract come back to the council for approval?
Yes.
Well, I would say, I don't see a problem entering into negotiations at this point in time to gain additional insight as to what they may be proposing, or even have a better idea as to the potential cost for this part of the contract. I think we're just gathering information. But to Councilman Shadie's point, I think it may go beyond just tweaking, you know, the very southern part of the park, because they've already kind of have an idea of what the plan's going to look like. If they took into consideration what may develop along the river, it may require something more significant than just tweaking, and it's probably best to know now, as opposed to the time of construction, that, boy, these plans are going to change as it relates to the southern part of the park. So I don't mind gathering more information at this point in time. I mean, again, we're not approving the contract, and maybe Hargraves could provide us some ideas, maybe not plans in particular, but some ideas to what they're thinking about with respect to incorporating future development along the river with the park. I still think that's kind of, I'm going to use a poorer term, but kind of a game changer in regards to the future development along the river. I see great potential from the river, south all the way to the Capitol Hill and Stockyards area, if we do it correctly, as well as from the river further north back into the downtown area. I see great potential in that area, and I'd like to focus on it as much as possible. So again, we're just negotiating with them, and I'd like to gain some more information from Hargraves.
David, or do you remember the Courte Shore videos that were produced, and they had two big, high-rise residential towers on that area? I mean, are we, we're going to master-plan that? I mean, the last we saw of this had two, these two big towers, we're going to, are we going to have public meetings? Are we going to talk about what we want on the river now?
I think that what they talked about was more recreational and tying the south end of that park. You know, the park extends down there, and we've talked about it tying to the river, but it just kind of ends at the river now, and this would allow us to actually tie that together and do some things along the front of the river. and this would allow us to actually tie that together and do some things along the front of the river.
How much do you think a study like that would cost? And are you going to have public meetings to talk about what people would want at the river?
We can, we'll include that with what we're continuing to do with the other park, but we could include some additional meetings in there if you want. I think that it would be $50,000, somewhere in that ballpark.
Now, let's be clear on this. This was not a staff-generated issue. This came out of the Citizens Subcommittee, went to the Advisory Board on this. And, you know, Dr. Sheehan, you're right, it's off several years before this has happened, but it's not a terrible idea to take a look at tying the connections. It's the timing of it. I don't know if I have the answer to that.
May I make another point? Again, we could just go further south to Fort Worth to see the activities they've got going on with respect to their river development. It's really, if I was younger especially, very intriguing and very exciting as to the types of events that they have along the river. I'm not suggesting we have the same kind of events because, again, they tend to be focused more on younger people.
Yeah, I think some good points are being made here. Why don't we go ahead and approve the negotiation, but let's, everyone in the council, think about the dollar amount that might be ultimately expended. And I think everyone agrees, these things are fluid, and it may be too early to start doing it. It may be years too early. But I think the Subcommittee's just trying to, you know, get prepared and wants to make sure that that southern end of the park isn't completely out of line with what a park planner might be thinking about for the river.
Yeah. One of the elected, one of you mentioned to me yesterday that a concern about the possibility of, okay, you do this, and you've got some pretty pictures of these improvements off the MAPS-III park and the expectation thereof that that's going to be done with MAPS-III. And I think, you know, that that is a risk, but you've got to be very clear that this is an unfunded, these are unfunded projects, and these are just concepts to tie in to make sure, again, there's a fluid motion between the adjacent parks, but to make it clear that that is not the expectation, that it would not be billed with MAPS-III dollars.
All right, Larry?
I just wanted to go on record. If this was a vote today, I'd vote no because I don't have enough information. So if the people who want to move this forward, in my perspective, want to go through and give us some what-ifs, that's fine, but I'm not ready to commit any dollars. I just wanted to make sure that they know that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Larry on that and kind of what you said also, Mayor. One of the things that I have a constituent that has a substantial business in the area just outside the take area. And one of the concerns that he continues to have is that kind of uncertainty. He has only been aware for a fairly short time that the same people that are going to take part of his property are not the same government entity that wants the rest of his property. I mean, he straddles it. He has property inside the take area and a property immediately adjacent to the take area. So, and that says nothing about what's going to happen east of Robinson. What happens east of Robinson is going to make a huge difference, and I don't know that we have the slightest idea what's going to happen east of Robinson. I mean, the environmental impact of trying to redevelop that for anything is going to be huge. That's been salvage yards for 60, 70 years, you know? So there's probably a big environmental problem in cleaning up that property east of Robinson. I think all that adds to what Ed said and what Larry says about the prematurity of it, maybe, the fact that we don't know enough about what's going on. There's a lot of things can happen in the next 10 years that would make anything we do today just $50,000 down the drain. So I'd like to know a lot more about it before we do it. I'm not opposed to planning, but I guess I'm opposed.
Why don't we find out what type of dollars we're talking about? All right, we have a motion on this? How about a motion? All right, cast your votes. Passed by a score of 7 to 1. Item 8N, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. Item 8O, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Motion? Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. Item 8P, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. Item 8Q, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Cast your votes, item is struck. And item 8R is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under either of the items listed under 8R? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. Item 8S, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes, and that item moves into executive session. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of the items listed under 9A1? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Gary, you want to get us started on items from council today? All right, Ed?
Just heartbroken and disgusted with the committee yesterday that voted 6 to 2 to vote down local, the preemption. I, you know, I just, I'm caught off guard. I didn't expect that. I'm just so disappointed. And I know that there's a press conference today, and I'm looking forward to that. But one thing I would say that I'm not sure that's on people's radar, and I would just, I would put it out there in addition to everything else that's been said. Meg pointed it out when we were talking with Terry Klein, and that is, we have an impending, we have a crisis now of we don't have enough primary care physicians in this state. And what I believe is you are pushing, you're pushing the medical community too far. You have got to think about not just what's happening to a particular restaurant or a particular smoker or even the people impacted by the secondhand smoke, but what's happening to all of us as a consequence of a 26% smoking rate. You're wearing out the medical community. I listened to Dr. Krishna on Flashpoint, he's talking about 7,000 physicians asking for this to be passed, and you tell them no? You tell them you're not going to address this 26% smoking rate in any way? The primary care physicians are not overpaid. They're, they are, they work very hard hours, they've got a lot of debt, and they're being worn out by 26% smoking rates, 33% obesity rates, diabetes rates that are tripling, the highest per capita narcotic prescriptions of any state in America. Why would you practice primary care medicine in Oklahoma? When you could go to Colorado or? This needs to be on people's radar. When thousands and thousands of physicians ask for something to be done, and then you tell them in this manner, not just that you're going to kill the bill, but to kill it in such a way that you can't bring it up again for two years, is so inflammatory, so offensive, that something has to be done. I certainly would like to talk to our lobbyists, which is Brett Robinson, Raygon Gentry, David Robertson. You know, I'm not hearing that they were particularly active. This was our number-one legislative issue, number one. And we should have been so vigilant. And I'm not hearing, we're, these three gentlemen, who all have multiple other obligations, I understand that, beer, real estate, Cox, OMRF, Oklahomans for Modern Laws, which is purchasing wine in grocery stores, liquor, coal, Sooner Beer, Sterling Wine. I know they've got lots of, I'd like to know how, what exactly they were doing the last couple of weeks. I'm not blaming it on them, but I just want to know because what I'm hearing anecdotally is that nobody even knew we had lobbyists on this issue. Nobody certainly felt their presence. Nobody got, was, I'd like to know who they were talking to. We're spending good money on these three gentlemen, and this is our number-one issue. The, people have got to realize this is so far beyond just what one person is allowed to do with their body. It's raising all of our insurance rates, it's costing us economic development, it's costing us jobs, it is harming people who have asthma, who may be pregnant and don't know it. It is, and why are we on the defensive? I cannot understand how, we are, there's only two states that do this, and they want to argue that this is some kind of nanny state. The state is imposing their will. They want to micromanage cities, and they're calling us a nanny state? It's incredible. We've got to be, we cannot be so wimpy. I mean, we've got to be stronger, and we cannot let them put us on the defensive when they're, when they're doing what they're projecting onto us. I don't, you know, campaign contributions make it very difficult to understand the motivations. Senator Rob Johnson kind of led this campaign seemingly in the, and if you look at tobacconymoney.com, which you can quickly look at what each state legislature has received from the tobacco lobby, see that Senator Johnson has received seemingly the most. And so it's difficult to assess. Are they just misguided and hypocritical, or are they owned by someone, or both? But it makes it very difficult to understand when you've got this kind of money at the legislative level. But I don't know what the answer is. I know that this isn't working, as I heard the mayor say last night, and we have to do something. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to express my wife and my appreciation to the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association for the Hospitality Saturday. They had a very excellent program from our police department, Mr. Couch, on white-collar crime and also on the scams that are going on that many of our neighbors are encumbering right now, where people are coming up and asking about going out in their backyard to relocate cables or something, and while their citizen is out there in the backyard with these people, people are going in the front door and robbing them of their possessions. And so our neighbors need to be aware of that. And then Windsor Forest had a great chili dinner Saturday night. And then tonight, there's a Windsor Oaks Neighborhood Association meeting, and I'd like to compliment John Martin, the president, on an excellent piece that he put out in their newsletter encouraging neighbors to join their neighborhood association. I wish I could make that available to every neighborhood because there is power and there is an improved quality of life if people would just get involved with their neighborhood associations and work together to improve what those things are that they can have a say over. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh huh. Pete?
Mayor, I just want to say I share Ed's frustration and disgust in what happened at the legislature. On the optimistic side, I want to, the governor has done what, above and beyond what we might have expected somebody to do. I mean, she's, she's to be commended for what she's done, and I'm looking forward to the press conference today where she announces what's next. Your comments, that what we've done's not working so far. The 28 of the 48 states that permit the regulation of smoking are, have comprehensive statewide smoking bans. So the majority of the states have bans. Most of them, that are state laws, one way or another. I don't know how many of those are, were done by initiative petition or something that the legislature passed. I don't have any statistics on that. But the states that have local control, which is what we went after, are not having that much difficulty based on anecdotal information that I have. In fact, they're, and to the extent they are, what they want is comprehensive. They want everybody to be on that same boat. But Mississippi, for instance, has 46. We think about Mississippi just ratified the 13th Amendment this last week. They've got 46 cities that have local control. Their legislature may have been a little late on the abolition of slavery, but they were, they're sure a lot quicker than we are on smoking. Texas, all over Texas, there's, city by city, there's smoking control. The problem is, the concern I have about going for a comprehensive way of doing it is that the basic argument that we've had is that the, this legislature, more than any legislature in my memory in Oklahoma, complains about restrictions being placed on them by the federal government. And yet, they are willing to continue to restrict us as if somehow they've got a better idea of how we ought to be running our city and how, and what our health care problems are. And so part of me doesn't want to lose the local control argument because, just because of that. I think that's wrong. I think that government is better closer to the people. And I think it's hypocritical for the legislature to use the argument that somehow or other they're better qualified to decide what goes on in Oklahoma City than we are. That being said, again, I'm looking forward to the governor's press conference. I understand the mayor's going to be there today, and hopefully there'll be a new line of approach or attack to do it because it's, you know, I came to this, to some extent, just from my own concerns about what the city's medical care costs are. As we sit here and make decisions, I start, you know, frankly, with me, I make decisions about my own medical care based on what it's going to cost and how much it's going to impact the plan. But, you know, if I, if I do something that's unnecessary, if I get a treatment or a test that's unnecessary, is that going to raise some retired widow or widower? Is that going to raise their plan four cents a month because I did something that I didn't need to do? And so that's where I've come to this. This is, this is an insurance thing. This is what it costs to take care of people, and we all need to be more vigilant about it, even in our own lives, but we also need to be vigilant about it in what it costs everybody else. And to just ignore this based on some idea that it would be bad if four acres had one law and the village had another is so shortsighted. I have, I just have a hard time believing that, that that kind of attitude would carry the day. But obviously it did. So I look forward to what you can do today and what the governor has to say about what the next step is. Thank you.
Me, too. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, on a positive note, I'd like to commend freshman Senator Kyle Lovelace from South Oklahoma City in an effort to get this legislation passed. He was a strong proponent from the very first day, even offering an alternative at the last minute to try to save this bill. So I do commend his efforts, and it's, it's, gives me great hope and optimism for the future of South Oklahoma City's representation at the state legislature. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pierce, the superintendent for the Moore Public Schools, for meeting with our Public Works Director and Ms. Martin and myself last week. The Moore Public Schools is the largest public school system in the state and also the fastest-growing, and we were able to meet with her and her other individuals at the school district to talk about new schools that are being planned at the current time. Often, they're being built in areas where we only have traditional two-lane roads, and especially for elementary school, there's always a problem with parents parking, letting children off, and picking them up in the afternoon. And so we've got a great relationship with the Moore Public Schools, which covers well over 85% of Ward 5 as far as the school district. And it's just great to have such a great relationship with them. Thank you, Your Honor.
Skip?
Yes. I think we all see that we're in some very difficult days as it relates to the legislative process, and, you know, we all would have liked to have seen a different outcome. But, you know, I think that, you know, at least we started the conversation that's more than I think a lot of cities in Oklahoma, in the state of Oklahoma, had done as far as engaging in an effort to get the attention of the legislature from a, from a, from our position. So we'll continue the fight. I would like to remind everyone that on February the 21st at 6 o'clock here at City Hall, there will be a community meeting on public safety. And we have the chief of police, chief city, Ms. Janet Perry, who is the executive director of YWCA, and the Oklahoma Housing Authority Executive Director, Mark Gillette, to discuss concerns in the community as it relates to gangs, as it relates to domestic violence, as it relates to other criminal activity that exists not only in Ward 7, but that is all over the city of Oklahoma City. And so I want to thank the chief, I want to thank Ms. Perry and Mr. Gillette for being willing to be here to present their positions as it relates to these most serious issues that exist in our city. You know, one of the great statements I saw from the five-year forecast was the issue of crime and how it affects the economic development other than the fact that it is a true public health issue, I think, along with the issue of the smoking concerns. Crime rate captures a negative. Crime rate captures a negative aspect of a community that can affect its present and future economic development potential. The crime rate also measures demand on public services in the form of public safety expenditures. A rising crime rate in extreme circumstances can jeopardize the long-term health of the community by driving away existing businesses, discouraging new businesses, and straining the local government's budget with increased expenditures, along with the fact that what it does to the human conditions of individuals in the community. So I look forward to everyone being here that can on the 21st at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Pat? All right. City manager reports?
Yes, sir. Mayor, under the consent docket, there was an item regarding the Oklahoma City Plan, and at that time, Councilman Greenwell had asked that maybe Russell could give us a little bit of an update on the OKC Plan. So that kind of got away from us, but we'd still like to do that for a minute.
Okay.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I'm here today just to give you a little update on where we are with the comprehensive plan process, which I think is important to do since it's such a lengthy process. It's very comprehensive, involves putting an awful lot of effort out there to try and shape the future of the city. Just by way of background, we began this back in 2010 and doing a lot of the data analysis in 2011. We spent a lot of time identifying what the issues are that we needed to consider. Those were then, we rolled that out to the general public, and we had a number of stakeholder groups that we developed. And as a result of that, we established broad overarching goals for the plan in 2012. We are now in the process of developing policies to implement those goals. And we are using the input that we have garnered from the public input process. We're looking at best practices elsewhere, using model plans that have, that have been award-winning in other, other cities, but, but talking specifically to what we need to do in Oklahoma City. And these, this, what we're currently drafting will be the starting point for a discussion with our staff working groups, and I've emphasized this on many occasions, that the plan is very much the city's plan. So we've got a lot of engagement going on with the other departments. And coming up here in the next month, next couple of months, we'll be meeting with each of the departments individually, so we'll have the department heads, and it'll be specific, not, not all the departments, but the ones that have a direct relationship with the plan. So it'll be Public Works, and Parks, and Police, et cetera. And as a result of that, we'll refine the policies further and make sure that what we're crafting is in accord with what each of the departments are trying to do with their particular mission. And then we will take that back out to the community again. We will reorganize the stakeholder groups, we'll have meetings in different locations and at different times to be able to accommodate that. The public will be welcome to attend that. And input from those meetings will then also be incorporated back into these policies that we will then take to the Citizens Advisory Team that we formed last year as an oversight group. So that'll be the hard work, where we go through each of the policies with the Citizens Advisory Team and make sure that, that it's all working in simpatico and that we're on the right track with that. And then that should take several months. We'll come back in, towards the end of the year, hopefully with some more final draft policy documents. To inform the whole process, we've had a number of different studies going on. We have a Parks Master Plan, which is ongoing at the moment, and the survey that we sent out to the public to get the citizens' input on what they wanted to see with parks, that is, will be completed at the end of February, as well as the Community Appearance Survey, which is identifying what people want their community to look like, and has a number of different images to prompt them on how they want, what vision they have for the future of the city. We also have a housing demand study, and it's comprised of two components. One is a need study, so it's identifying how much housing we need, and then there's a market study, which identifies what type of housing people are looking for and where they want to live. The housing demands consultants are actually in town today and tomorrow, and we expect to get a draft of their work here by the end of March. One of the key components of the plan is the growth scenario analysis, which is where we identify what are the options for us going forward. So these are the broad directions on how the city will grow into the future. It will probably come up with about three options. One will be status quo, one will be probably a more compact development, and then there'll be something in between. The intent being to identify what the fiscal and other costs are associated with each of these different models, so that we've got the information then to identify what do we want Oklahoma City to be going forward over the next couple of decades. We will, when we get information from that, we'll feed that into our retail plan, which is also identifying where retail will go. And obviously, that's a key component of the way the city develops. And in the fall, we will go out with a citizen survey then, based on the policies and based on a broad understanding of all the different elements included in the comprehensive plan. We will ask the citizens for their input on each of those different elements about where they want to go, and we'll have more specific information based on all of these other studies and the policy drafting that we've done so far. So the document, the Plan Amendment that we had today was to hire a consultant that will help us with finalizing the plan. They will help with some of the policy formulation components, so we're relying on their knowledge of working across multiple different cities to help us with that. They will help us with the document preparation, giving us a single voice for the document because I've got different staff, and it's always very useful to have another set of eyes on a document which we've been working on for so long and has so many different authors in it. It's very useful to have somebody who can pull all that together. And they'll also help with some of the public meetings that we anticipate having towards the end of the year. So that's a brief update on where we are. Be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Russell? Pat?
Russell, would you estimate the approximate total cost of putting this plan?
Sorry?
What would be the total cost of putting this plan together?
This consultancy, we haven't put a figure on that. I'm anticipating perhaps over a couple hundred thousand dollars for that.
Assuming $200,000 for that.
And then for staff, staff input, I've had, I would say, equivalent of five or six full-time equivalents working on this for three years, which is not unusual. Comprehensive plans in any other major city are going to cost you a million to 2 million.
And would you say we're in the $2 million range?
I would not, I'd probably say about a million at this point.
1 million?
Or less than that.
How much have we spent total on consulting?
We received a grant from Housing and Urban Development for half a million dollars, and that is what's paying for all of those other consultancies I mentioned. The engagement of the consultant helped us with finishing the plan, that is a general fund cost.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Skip?
Russell, I would like to commend you and your staff on assisting in part of northeast Oklahoma City as it relates to this, part of this comprehensive plan on housing and land development. The tour that you all took us on was very educational. The pastor was very impressed with the fact that the city would have that much time to step out and come to the community and do the ride around. And so I want to thank you for that and hope that we will continue those type of working relationships as it relates to the comprehensive plan also in northeast Oklahoma City.
That neighborhood revitalization piece, I think is a, is a very important component of the plan.
Thank you.
Great. Russell, thank you.
Thank you.
David?
May I just ask a couple of questions? One, or a comment really, it's encouraging that we may be looking at some recommendations, especially with respect to new developments, that I think will meet what I say is the consumer demand for a better community as far as common space and other amenities that I think most people are looking for, even though it's not on the grand scale of some very affluent developments. I think even the smaller homes and homeowners still are looking for things such as common areas, green space, parks even within their neighborhoods. So I'm encouraged and optimistic as to what this plan may unfold. I do have a question, though. Does the plan look at some areas that are currently developed and more so around the inner city and areas that might be considered somewhat blighted as far as potential use or reuse of those areas? Or does this plan not address those items?
It is certainly going to talk to that issue, and this plan will be more specific about the solutions that we will be looking for going forward. But there's another phase in terms of the actual actions that need to be taken because some of those will require, some of them may require finance, some of them may require ordinance changes or new ordinances, and so that's the next phase. Once we identify exactly what we want to do and what's important within the plan, then staff will be required, will have to then take that the next step and enable it to happen on the ground. And as, because the plan is so comprehensive, there's going to be, going to be a lot of actions coming out of the plan. So the advice of the council and the Planning Commission is going to be important in terms of what are the highest priorities and what we move on first.
Well, let me just respond quickly to that in, because I constantly hear that we are running out of land for new businesses to relocate to Oklahoma City, and I just think we've got available land within our city limits that could accommodate that. Now, some may have existing use currently that could be better utilized in that regard. And I just think when we look at it, because I certainly believe retail development can lead towards improving the surrounding areas that may be somewhat blighted, but I think to some degree even other types of business development, whether it's manufacturing, biotechnology, other areas, will help give the start to redevelop an area that's been blighted, abandoned, and I just think we have some opportunities here to look at better uses of existing properties going forward.
I could not agree more. I think once an area becomes blighted, it's very difficult to pull it back together again because when it developed originally, it had the residential and the commercial, and they worked together. So when one or both go down, it's really hard because you have to pull them both up, which is why we have a Strong Neighborhoods Program for the residential piece of it, and then the Commercial District Revitalization Program for the commercial piece, which will be working together to, to pull it back up again. And I believe this is a, this will be a successful model. We're already getting a lot of support for both of those programs, and I was in Kansas City a couple of weeks ago, and they've got a model area up there, which they call the Green Impact Zone, and they've been able to funnel a lot of the resources and are achieving amazing results as a, as a result of that. So that just affirms for me that we're doing the right thing.
Can I ask just one question about public transit? How do you incorporate the studies? We have a $200,000 Nelson Nygaard study analyzing our bus routing, we have a, I think, $1.1 million 18-month study on, on a regional transit system, and then you'll, we'll decide a streetcar route. How do you incorporate all those three decisions and studies into the comprehensive plan?
Well, they will all be considered, in addition to ACOG's traffic modeling as well. And we have pulled all that together so that we're offering all of the different options that the community is asking for in terms of their existing ability to be able to move around on road infrastructure, but then looking ahead and looking at what we want from a public transit system. So I can't tell you specifically how we'll roll that in, but that information, anything else that Cockper or ACOG or anybody else has produced, will be, will be considered in the development of that, that plan.
And specifically transit-oriented development along those?
Yes. In fact, we will probably be looking at creation of a new zoning classification, which would be a TOD classification in anticipation of that.
Russell, thanks.
Thank you.
Also in the package this morning, there's a report on the update regarding the Oklahoma Water Utilities Trust, recent bond sale and some refundings. And one, I think it's important to note that the Moody's Standard &amp; Poor reaffirmed the trust ratings of a AAA and a AA1. That makes it one of the highest-rated water utilities, publicly-owned water utilities in the country. Secondly, with the sale, we ended up with a true interest cost of 3.009%, and that resulted in a $19 million savings for the ratepayers by virtue of that refunding. So that was, it was really good, and need to point out, thanks to Mr. Ryan and Mr. White for their leadership and conservative financial controls over the water trust to keep that bond rating up. And then also, there's a city manager report in your package regarding some changes based upon some discussions we had here regarding the Planning Commission. We talked about maybe making sure the Planning Commissioners have advanced notice of zoning items coming their way, so we've changed the procedures to make sure they're notified ahead of time. And we also talked about some things regarding notification to the citizens to make sure that we use plain language in the notices, and so we worked with legal to make sure we still are following and covering the legal aspects of it, but we have some additional language in there to be very clear as to what the zoning application is. And there was some discussion, the people are thinking when they get these notices that we're rezoning their property, so we made it very clear in there that we are not rezoning your property going forward on that. So those are all items that came out of, out of a discussion a couple of weeks ago. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Questions for the city manager? All right. Citizens to be heard. We have one person that signed up, Roy Stafford. Roy, come on up. Citizens to be heard. We usually ask for comments to be limited to three minutes. And Roy, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Roy Stafford, 3901 South Portland Avenue, Apartment 109, Oklahoma City. As everyone on the council is well aware, I've appeared before the council upwards of 10 times. Mr. Shadid, you, Mr. Greenwell, haven't been here throughout all of my addresses, but I come before the council today seeking assistance with a problem without going into details. Everyone else on the council is aware of what that problem is. Post-traumatic stress disorder is an acquired mental deficiency that I suffer from, and I'm pretty sure that everyone on the council is aware of the origination of my mental deficiency. I didn't go to Walmart and pick it up. Mr. Couch, the meeting we had a couple of years ago, do you recall the address of the law firm of Friends and the Family that I was referring to in DC?
I remember the discussion. I don't remember that address now, sir.
Well, I'm sure you've had a lot of other things on your mind between now and then, but it was, it was a significant address. Friends and the Family is a real entity. We don't, we don't exploit who we are or what we do. We just attempt to effect change where we can. My life has been an example to these people. They found great strength in me, and they don't know how. I'm still alive, by my own hand or by the hands of others, they can, they have no clue. I've turned my life over to God a long time ago. I don't take a breath without, I feel that it comes from Jesus. I do that. I've never attempted to tell anybody how to do what they do, but I have an enormous amount of relationships with ranking police officials, and I gain them earnestly by gaining their respect for the things that I've gone through, and they can't figure out how I went through it either without being a retaliatory-type person. Mayor Quinet, I hope that you didn't take it personal, because comments, because that wasn't what it was. It was to drive home the point of the seriousness of my community and the seriousness of my Jester, Deputy Chief, he has personal knowledge of some of the things that I've gone through. Jester, deputy chief, he has personal knowledge of some of the things that I've gone through over my 28-year relationship. I love these guys. They're not my personal friends, but they respect me for what I am and what I was forced to be. I can't imagine why a group of people responsible for a community would not take advantage of something right in front of them to help them change the aspect and the tolerances in that community. I'm not the Bible. I'm not a dictionary, but I'm the best living tool that you have to affect the odds. And you know what I'm talking about. I need your help. Beyond today, I can't promise anything for myself or for my community. And that's a sad feeling on my part, because I am a totally optimistic person. I've been optimistic since day one. Bula May, you know who Bula May is? She instilled some things in me that no one can take. But ballistics expert Graham Robinson, OSBI, he had some statements that he made to me that really terrify me, because he told me the way we were raised, the things that I am saying, the things that I do will get me killed. Got no fear of that, man.
Roy, I need you to wrap it up. What would you like to say at the end?
I'm asking for, just like I wrote on, on the request to be heard, for help today, not a scheduled meeting. This is not, this is not, it's not what you think it is. The only way that you can figure out what I'm meaning by this is to talk to me, which you've yet to be able to do, Mr. Cornet. And I'm not talking hours. You need to sit down with me. And I'm asking for that today, today.
Roy, thanks for coming. We have executive session. We'll be back.